There you go.
Hi.
All right. I will call to order the April twenty eighth planning board meeting. Is there anybody here to speak to something that is not on the agenda tonight? All right. We're gonna start looking at some minutes, folks. This is exciting. So we got our February twenty fourth meeting minutes, which I believe is me, James, and Chet. You guys got a chance to look at them?
Yes. My motion to approve the February twenty fourth minutes.
All in favor? Aye.
My motion to approve.
The rest of you.
Twenty-fourth minutes.
Wait, hold on, hold on, hold on. So then, the other two abstain.
Uh, I, uh, yeah, hold on, so.
Yeah, that's right, no click, sorry.
James' motion, Chet's second, three oh, and then Harry, Libby abstain.
Right.
Got it.
So now, March twenty fourth, which is me, James, and Libby.
I motion to approve the March twenty fourth minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You two gentlemen abstain?
Harry.
All right.
Chet abstain.
Now, on to April seventh, which is me, Chet, Harry, Libby, and James, the full group.
I motion to approve the April seventh minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You gotta be fast.
No extensions.
So that was five oh.
Now, the April fourteenth, Chet, Harry, Libby, and James.
I motion to approve the April fourteenth minutes.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain. So that's for.
Four oh, Jesse. It's like listening to a card game.
Yeah. All right, and then we have the April twenty-second meeting minutes for the ordinance committee. I wasn't even at this one, but I just noticed that it started at six thirty and adjourned at six twenty-four.
Oh.
So.
All right.
Unlikely. We're quick, but we're not back.
Okay, it started at six, sorry, I can fix that.
Okay.
I can, if you just mark it up with your pen, and then I'll make the change.
I motion to approve the April twenty-second minutes with the amendment that started at six o'clock.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that's four.
And I abstain.
Jesse abstain. Oy.
All right.
Thank you.
But now we have all our meeting minutes approved.
Yes, we're up to date now.
All right. Knowing ours, the old business, so, uh, first new business is the special permit amendment for Thirty-Four Hill Road, Seventeen Seventy-Six Brewery Company. So you could come forward and.
Yes, sir.
Talk to us a little bit.
A lot of votes.
Here, you can sit here.
Sit?
Yeah, you can sit.
That's fine.
So the application doesn't have a whole lot of detail of what's going on, so maybe you could walk us through what the plan is here, what you're looking to do.
Well, it's sort of basic, we would just be creating essentially a patio in the middle of this field, uh, being closed, maybe for a beer garden. And, uh, we could just have people essentially sit outside and enjoy a pint of beer.
So it's just this area here, the rest of this is all existing, and that's the place, the space, and what, how it exists today?
That is correct.
It's twelve hundred square feet?
Approximately.
And, and describe the structure exactly?
Uh, it will be enclosed, there would be, the entire thing would be stone. It would be about EA high, and, uh, you know, there'd be two entrances, one entrance, one exit. And, uh, it'd be in a contained area, so that people don't really handle it.
Okay, and any other changes? I know there was discussion about a fire pit, too?
Yes, the fire pit would be part of it.
Inside?
Uh, inside, yes, it is an open-spaced area.
Okay. It has a roof or no roof?
It has no, it has a slight awning in one section of it.
Okay, presumably not over the fire pit?
Not over the fire pit.
Okay.
So when you say enclosed, what is?
Enclosed, the perimeter is enclosed.
With what?
Like there's a wall.
With a wall, but it is not enclosed with a.
How high is the structure?
He said EA high.
Three feet?
Yeah. Just so the people don't, uh, jump over.
You're trying to get an idea of how high it would be.
So this isn't going to obscure the view of whatever's going on in there from the street or the major.
Yes, well, we put it in the corner over here on purpose, so that A, it, uh, wouldn't be seen by the neighbors, and B, if we did generate any noise, it would be blocked by the building. So we strategically put it in that corner.
And how, what's the dimensions of the beer garden space there?
Uh, let's call it forty by, hold on, I need to check my arithmetic.
Forty by sixty?
Okay.
Hold on.
Twenty, twenty-four hundred.
Twenty-four.
And.
It's not very wide, is it?
Okay, but you don't know the actual dimensions for it? The wood awning is listed on here as twelve by twelve.
Yeah.
But.
The awning doesn't cover the whole.
The awning doesn't cover, I mean, is it?
No, the awning is only covering a small.
A quarter of it?
Yeah.
Okay. And are you imagining, um, tables out there, or?
There would be four or five pickable tables.
Okay. And it's not actually adding a different use, right? You already have people that are there doing tastings and.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Did you check the neighborhood by chance, uh, did you plan on going?
Uh, I did not speak to them directly.
Why not?
Well, because I was instructed to sit down rather than to speak directly to them, but.
I think the first thing I would've done is go around the neighborhood and find out what the hell's going on, and let them know and be informed. That'd be number one.
Fair enough.
Not to drop a bomb on them, and all of a sudden, you know, people live in a tranquil setting out there, and they don't want to be disturbed, you know?
With all due respect, by no means am I dropping a bomb, I mean, this is, well, we've got very limited hours on, you know, Saturdays, and this is not a, by any means, a huge endeavor.
What are your hours right now?
Uh, we are open from two to six on Saturdays, open to the, oh, four to seven on Thursdays and Fridays, but two to six on Saturdays, and those are the hours that would sort of remain.
Okay.
We got some feedback from the health department, and there was a question about what food we might offer there.
There will be no food.
What about, uh, the fire, the fire department put in some input as well, stating the fire pit can't be larger than three feet, have you seen any of their commentary?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any comments to what they said here?
I mean, those are reasonable concerns, and we will design the fire pits to their specific, and Wayne will.
Just so everyone knows, it says the fire pit can't be larger than three feet in diameter, two feet in depth, it says the fire pit, uh, has to be located at least twenty-five feet from any structures. Um, I don't, obviously that includes the.
The building itself, yes.
Yes.
And the roof.
And the, and the awning and all that, yeah.
Well, I, I don't know whether the beer garden itself counts as a structure.
Yeah, it's.
If it's inside a structure, but I guess that's a fire code.
Is that, is that the issue, is you're planning on building the fire pit ins, internal to the structure, or is it external?
It's within, it's within the patio itself, it's all stone, so.
So they say from any structure, I'm not sure, do you?
I think they're, they're talking about the awning.
I mean, I guess whatever we approve is obviously conditioned on complying with the fire code, so.
I agree. That's an issue that I think you may worry is.
Whereabouts will the fire pit be? If you're gonna have the awning covering about now, the fire pit would have to be off to one side, so it won't be under that awning.
Correct.
So you may have to move it close to maybe a corner on one side.
And you noted that you would require a renewable seasonal permit for burning, uh, there has to be a water supply required, and fire extinguishers and all of that, and you're aware of everything that is stated there, okay?
I just wanna make sure he's not gonna put it in the center, that's part of that awning will be.
Right, we'll make sure that we're compliant with the fire code.
Okay, and your hours of operation are only four to seven P M.
Yes.
And two to six P M.
On Thursdays, probably, and two to six on Saturdays.
And that's not gonna change with the new beer garden?
No.
Okay. I guess, you guys have any other questions before we open it up, and we've got a large audience here today that seems interested in this? You guys have anything before I ask?
I'll wait till I hear from the.
Sure. Anybody here like to speak?
Before we begin, I would think that if you're gonna present.
Wait a minute, hold on, your name and your address for the record for the minute.
Rena Russell. Nine Fort Hill Road.
Thank you. And everybody, before you speak, please, um, name an address, okay?
I'm just curious, um, if I were gonna present something to a board, I think I would have all these specifics, like you asked a lot of questions, he didn't provide anything in writing. He just gave you a picture, so you're asking all the questions of size and where and shape, you know, maybe you didn't ask the right questions, maybe he didn't provide the correct information, how do you really know what he's building?
Well, I mean, the, so there is some information in here, it's got a twelve hundred square foot brick patio in the back corner of the property, it's got a twelve by twelve wooden awning, and a fire pit that would obviously, as we've discussed, be, uh, done by the building, in compliance with the fire code and the building code. So any approval, if we were to give it, would be conditioned on the, the presentation he's made, so it's sort of based on that information, which is why we're trying to get all this stuff, you're right, I mean.
We don't have that information.
Yeah.
We have a twelve hundred square foot.
Doug Russell, same address.
Hold on, hold on, I'm sorry, Doug, you said?
Doug Russell. We've got, you know, a copy of the special permit, and it just says twelve hundred square foot patio, back corner of property.
That's it.
I added, I added some additional information for the board, when he submitted his application, I wrote down, I asked him if there were any more specifics about the awning and the fire pit, because, um.
So that'd be on here?
It's, it's on, it's on there, and it's on the original, it didn't make it on the photocopy for whatever reason, but it's been.
It just surprises to us all, because when I talked to the, you know, called in about it, I was told there might be a fire pit, there might be bands playing, there might be food.
Right, so that's why.
It seemed like a whole bunch of mightbes.
Right, and we had heard a lot of that, too, so that's why we're asking the questions, to try to pin down exactly what it is, 'cause you're right, we wanna know exactly what he's looking to do, so that we know what, if we approve anything, what we're approving, so.
And just to make, you know, Eric aware, none of us were aware of a number of things I've already heard, of, 'cause the planning board approved a liquor, or, no, the planning board approved this permit, which states not a pub and not a retail. Since then, we see, there's not just tastings, there's selling of beer, there's drinking of beer, there's selling of beer, there's a, you know, a pouring permit, all of that, that I'm sure it probably was posted or publicized, none of us knew about it, nobody on the street knew about any of that. Am I correct?
Yes.
Correct.
No, I, I. You know, okay, but nobody on the street knew.
I attended the meeting that, or.
He's the only abutter, probably, that got a notice about it. Nobody came and talked to us about it, even though we all live on the street, we're more than three hundred feet away, but we're a hundred yards away, you know, that type of thing.
Right.
So there's probably two abutters, maybe you and the school, none of the rest of us, I think Bill is the only abutter.
I can show you the abutters list if you'd like to look at it, it's in the file, if you'd like to look to see who got postcards in the mail, I have it, so.
Yeah, I can tell you though.
Why on the street?
We're on the street, we all know we didn't get it.
I'm just telling you I have the public information, so it's public records, so if you wanna take a look at it, it's yours to look.
We understand, our whole point is what you already mentioned, we're on the street, we don't get notified, none of us knew any of those situations that, when we look at permit, it said, no retail, no pub, when we moved into that street, we understood it was gonna be a warehouse, that, you know, they were gonna generate.
Make beer.
Make beer, and wholesale it or sell it, but our understanding was tasting was the only thing that was gonna happen there. All this other that's occurred, I probably wouldn't have moved to that street, and everybody on this street is not happy with what's occurred, am I correct? We've all talked about it. So we didn't know about any of this, it doesn't match to what we hear on the permit, and I understand licensing board did their things, but it doesn't match to anything.
Planning permission.
No, the licensing board gave pouring permits, the licensing board gave entertainment permits, we didn't know about it, we would've gone there, we would've objected to it, because we got a number of reasons we can go through about a residential street, quiet neighborhood, drinking on the street.
So, but it does, it does seem like the hours are pretty limited, so I'm curious about.
They don't match, they don't match, Eric, you can tell me, last, not Saturday, the previous Saturday, you had a band, it went till eight-thirty, I was there on Saturday last week at six o'clock, still serving beer, it was beyond the hours. So I understand it's being said that, but that's not actually what's occurring. And maybe they stop serving and people stay for an hour or two, I don't know that either, but it doesn't match just those hours, and everybody's gone. I can tell you also, parking space, there's, I don't know, thirty of them shown on here, there's actually twenty approved, when you go up there on a Saturday night, there's more than thirty, forty cars up there.
Oh, yeah.
So it doesn't match to, I don't know if there's a fire code, whatever, but it doesn't match to what we're seeing for the special permit. It's beyond.
Do you wanna comment on the hours of operation issue?
All right, the eight-thirty, it did go over, I double booked there, it did.
But you, you put it on your Facebook that it was open till eight-thirty.
Yes. That, that, that was.
So it wasn't a surprise, it was, it was.
It was, that was my mess-up, but yes, we usually do end at six, um, we are not, you know, we're not raging until one o'clock in the morning, you know, we like to have a nice.
What, what determines the hours?
You can do it seven days a week?
Well, I mean.
I guess my.
Hold on, hold on, people, hold on, one of you.
I need your, I need your name and your address, please.
Don Mitchell, Nineteen Forty Hill Road.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Don Mitchell, Nineteen Forty Hill Road.
Did you wanna answer that question about what determines the hours?
Well, we can, we can set hours as part of.
You guys can set hours, you guys can do whatever you want, but he is not gonna listen to it. I've been in this situation before, I've seen this happen. Don't you people care about us?
Wait a minute, just wait a minute.
On the street.
Just cool off, huh? Well, I, I assume you, you guys set standards.
I'm cool.
I'm, I'm sure you want the standards to be met that you set, too.
Yes.
Right.
So that's why we're here, we're saying, the rest concerns, I'm not saying you did something wrong.
Right.
The planning.
Something went wrong somehow. Jessica, can I ask a question here?
Poor Harry.
How did this, how did this guy selling beer done, I remember the permit that we gave, I was on the original, on that board that we gave that permit, and there was nothing about selling beer that I can recall, it was just, uh.
I believe you were given a copy of the original permit in the packet that I sent you, correct?
Right, yes. Yeah, I've kinda kept that whole thing, I'm correct.
Of a retail company.
Yeah.
It says that the brewery facility will include a ten thousand square foot building, plus silos and acreage for a production of hops, parking provided for twenty vehicles, facility will produce and bottle alcoholic beverages and may host tours, but will not include a pub or retail component.
Yeah.
The project will expand utilities to the project site, including water, sewer, gas, and then, um, there were two conditions, one, that the tree removal shall be minimized, and be only to allow for the construction of the driveway access and installation of utilities, and that the final site stormwater management plan shall be reviewed by the city engineer and board of health.
Well, then how'd I get to this point?
State law changed.
There was approval on licensing. It's right there. Licensing board approved.
Hold on, let, let's hear the app.
And it said that you.
Hold on, please.
Massa, when I previously applied for the permit, um, the farmer brewer's license did not include a pouring permit, but recently, state law changed and allows breweries to have a, a pouring permit.
I'm aware of that, do you have proof of that?
No, they.
Uh, John Knyvell, Seventeen Forty Hill Road.
Hold on, John what?
John Knyvell, K-N-Y-V-E-L. Does the board realize that he's running a full-blown bar here? With noise coming out the door from the bands?
Yeah.
Do you, do you guys realize what, he's in our neighborhood doing this?
I mean, this is the first time that I've heard any concerns of, so, like, obviously, we want to hear the concerns when you're live here.
And we, we went. Right, exactly, well, we went, we made all the meetings, and we left believing that we were gonna be good neighbors, and let them into our neighborhood, and, you know, trust them to, but now, all this stuff kinda came, we didn't know anything about this stuff. That's all I know is on Saturday, I've got a friggin' band that I'm listening to in my house, all right?
So.
And, and just this patio, I can't imagine what this beer garden would be.
Where do you live in relation to the?
Kitty corner.
Is it fair to say that the major concern is the live music that you guys have?
No.
No.
Exactly, it's a bar, everything, it's a.
Is everything a traffic music?
Drinking, driving, speed, there's children, it's a.
You guys know the bike, the bike path crosses there, right?
I know, well.
If you have one of his beers, you're impaired.
A pint of beer, you're impaired, right? How many kids we have riding bicycles down the street?
Yeah.
Joyce Petruskovich, fifteen.
Sorry, first name?
Joyce.
Joyce?
Fifteen Fort Hill Road. Um, I'm looking at the public notice that was put in the paper, he doesn't have Fort Hill Brewery, he's got Seventeen Seventy-Six Brewery Company.
And we didn't know that.
We don't know about that either.
No.
It's Fort Hill Brewery, as far as we know.
Yeah.
And then, sit, this past Saturday, I'm sitting on my porch, and I see three people with a dog walk over to brewery at six o'clock. I look out my window later, they're finally leaving and cutting through Mr. Koshon's property at seven o'clock at night, and they didn't get there till about six o'clock.
We got home with Robert Petruskovich, Fifteen Forty Hill Road, we went, uh, got home about nine-thirty on Saturday night, and there were still people there, in cars parked.
This happened before, we had it to the ends.
And I guess, Doug Russell again, that the issue is what has changed from, from a building and manufacturing facility brewery to now more of a party area and all that? Eric can't control people coming and going, you know, because it's become more of a bar, and people that wandered across, you know, the fields and whatever.
They're walking in the field.
Yeah, they're just doing that.
They're breeding cats.
One of the, one of the times, people, all the way in the back there.
I would think your concern would also be the road.
Jane.
Eleven Fort Hill Road. I think you're, I think it would be appropriate for your concern to also include the tri-comming school, the Northeast Use and Youth and Families Building, which abuts onto the property, now granted, most of those students don't come down Fort Hill Road, but they are on a bike trip, and the noise, and should this develop further, there could be access, I would not think that the school would be very happy about this, but have you in fact asked them?
Have they been notified?
We assume they're notified.
They've, they received the postcard.
Would they be confused also by the Seventeen Seventy-Six, we under, some of us understand, I think, why the name change happened, but it, you guys, in publicizing the meeting, should've been aware of that and put it as Fort Hill Brewery.
Well, I mean, the applicant is the applicant, I mean, that's the entity that.
Well.
The issue is, we didn't know.
We didn't know, and that was, we would not have been at this meeting had, had we gone on.
Yeah.
That name.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be a DBA, I'm assuming, is it a DBA, Fort Hill? Then it should state the full.
Yeah.
Kathy Trugert, Thirteen Fort Hill Road, um, I could hear them hooting in Harlem from my house this Saturday, and I took pictures of them hanging out drinking right by their cars out in the front of the building, is that allowed?
Well, that, I mean, that's not really a planning board.
And I could hear the people singing from inside the building all the way down to my house, and I'm quite a ways away from them, I have, my husband gets up at four A M. every morning to go to work, and goes to bed at seven-thirty, we, we bought that house, figuring it was a nice quiet area and raise our daughter and have a nice area to live in. If he puts out this outside garden, we're gonna hear even more of it, and that's not gonna make me happy, it's not gonna make my husband happy.
Yeah, I mean.
We simply bought that property to be a quiet area.
I mean, part of the, the tension as well is that, there, it's, it's right on the line, right, Jessica, between industrial and this residential zone, right?
It's industrially zoned, it's right, it's.
And it abuts the boundary line.
And it abuts a residential zone.
Right, so it's, it's not quite your typical site in the industrial zone.
Is that why the special permit, or?
Well, no, but it's just that, I mean, it, it is in an industrial location, so there are a lot of industrial uses that you can do by right there, and typically, that's sort of accepted, but because you're in an industrial zone, but it, because it's on the boundary and there's obviously residences, you know, that abut him, it makes it a little more complicated.
How about this thing?
Janie Thurber.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Janie Thurber, yeah, I wanna say that when we realized that this was coming in, I personally thought, oh my God, this view is gonna be spoiled, Eric has done a terrific job of building something that is handsome, he's been sensitive to the garden around it, I mean, like flower garden, he's planted it, so as a building, I think he's done a fabulous job, no longer do my husband and I feel like, oh God, that's a nice, it's, it's not. So these other things that have happened, I think, are an unfortunate development, because we could've been, and some of us still feel like we can be, good neighbors, as long as it stays, or pulls back somewhat to the what had been asked, and it remains a brewery company rather than a, than a pub or, you know, for people to be drinking there.
Yeah.
And there's a difference, and we want that difference, 'cause we'd like him not to.
Right, we want him to succeed, you know?
Yeah, we don't wanna abandon building.
To, to stick to what the expectations were and not go further.
Yes, sir.
Bert Thurber, Nineteen Forty Hill Road. Originally, we, I, were sympathetic to Eric, I like him, I, I'm sort of inspired by his idea, I think he's got a lot of good ideas, therefore, we were sympathetic and supportive to placing a brewery in a neighborhood which didn't have anything like that to begin with. Now we have a sense that we've been snuggled, okay? Because what started out, and was pledged to us as not being a retail outlet or a pub, has evolved into something far beyond that, and the evolution continues. I do not wish to believe that Eric always had this in mind, and in fact consciously, deliberately, connivingly snuggled us. I would prefer to believe that what happened was, he didn't know for sure at the beginning what he was going to do, and as things evolved, he got more new different ideas, or as it said in one of the promotional pieces that I think he was probably responsible for, what's next? So it's not just the concern about what's already changed outside of the boundaries of the original planning board's agreement, we're concerned about where it goes from here, and the direction and the pace is alarming. It's not just that people, someone said that he can't control who shows up, or when they show up, but in fact, Eric, you know, that you have increasingly encouraged people to come and make use of this, not just for a tour, but in fact as a place to, I'm taking this from your Facebook page, to rock, to jam, to party. As he encourages this, increasingly, more and more people come naturally, that's what he's encouraging, therefore, we have this sense that we were led to believe we were getting one thing, but at some point, Eric evolved to want something more, and there's no reason to think the evolution will not continue, or as it says on another part of it, I think this is his website, what is it, do you want a BMX? A BMX, uh, ring?
BMX ring?
Was it, what, what was, what was the, what was the?
Bicycle BMX, is that what you're referring?
Yeah, he's talked about that.
Oh, that was on, yeah, that was on the Facebook.
If you want me to pull out the page, I'll pull out the page.
I'm sure, sir, I just don't recall it off the top of my head.
Oh, well, I don't recall it off the top of my head, fortunately, I have a page, it's a fun one, so we'll have to find it. What's happening is that an area of East Hampton that has historically been sort of the northeast, here's the Mount Tom Res- Reservation, here's the old Pascomic Historical Site, here are the fields, here are the farms, here's the Arcadia Sanctuary, here's the Oxbow, here's the Rod and Gun Club, here's the Protecta, the Cultural Land, a corner that was, you can tell us it's by right industrial, what you mean is by law, it's industrial, what's right and what's law are sometimes two different things. And what, an area that has historically been and continued to be sort of a rural pastoral recreational beautiful tranquil part of East Hampton, is now in the process of changing. Probably, we would've been wise to have in fact opposed the original brewery, but we were trying to be good neighbors. That has not been reciprocated. I'm gonna come back to what, I guess Mr. Schuman said, not only are we unhappy about what's happened in recent months, not only are we concerned about what's going to happen in future months, because there seems to be no end to this, this evolution to an entertainment site, but we're concerned about the process by which we got here, namely, neither Eric nor the town properly wisely informed people living in that area about the changes that were taking place. Instead, whether you call it a farm or what you call it, we've discovered at the end that significant changes have already taken place, apparently with not always everyone's approval, muscle, or knowledge, and that we wanna continue, that Eric wants to continue in that direction. So I'm disappointed that the town didn't do a better job of informing long time, some lifetime residents of East Hampton.
And we're not even like them.
Okay, that they're, that, that, and someone who had come in the last few years was about to make signi, was wishing to make significant changes, significant, from, from a basically, well. From a, from a basically, well, if you go, if you go onto one of the websites that, that evaluates East Hampton in terms of what there is to do in East Hampton, a very notable website, the name of which I momentarily forget, TripAdvisor, I actually go there fairly often to consult. And you ask, what are the top ten things to do in East Hampton? Going to the Fort Hill Brewery is now number two. Now, to be sure, there's a limited sample. There are only five, ten, fifteen people who responded this, so it's hardly the most representative thing in the world. It's, it's, it's number two on the list. It barely beats out Arcadia Wildlife Sanctuary. That is symbolic. That's what's happened. The brewery is beating out the Wildlife Sanctuary. That's not the direction I think neither residents nor the town should, should go.
Anybody else?
I'd add something to that. You were talking about, uh, John Conable.
That's right.
Sorry. Uh, you're talking about its own industrial, residential. Just because it's zoned industrial doesn't mean somebody can go in and create a nuisance for anybody else that lives there.
No, but, no, right, so that's what I'm talking about, is that it's not your typical industrial lot because it abuts all these residences, right?
I didn't want to.
It's what makes it, it makes it more complicated than your typical.
I didn't want to dismiss the saying, well, you could have a factory across the street, you know, because we could. But they, no, no matter who moves over there, can't create a nuisance for the rest of us that live there.
Right.
Right, okay. Just, just so, it just made it sound like it lessened the significance of it because.
No, I'm, there's, there's two extremes, right? There, you could be trying to do this in a residential area, or you could be a, a residence that's located in an industrial zone. We have those as well.
Right.
And it, it swings the balance, right? This is a complicated case, because it's right on the boundary, so it's an industrial lot that's also located in a residential neighborhood. And that makes it complicated.
So I have a question. The planning, Doug Russell.
The planning, sorry.
We know all your names by the end.
We're down a clerk.
The planning board has certain guidelines that you have to file and certain things that, you know, you can approve. So now that we're bringing up areas that some of you, I don't know if any of you are familiar with or not, what is our rights or what are our options to, about the pouring license, the entertainment license? None of us are happy with it. I don't know if it falls under your.
I mean, the pouring license stuff is all outside of our jurisdiction.
Right.
I mean, I'm, I'm not sure, this is the first I've heard about how they've gotten authority to go beyond the special permit.
That's my question.
And frankly, I'm inclined to continue it, and so we can do some research on that, because I don't know. But, but I, but you're right, I mean, there's a lot of new information here, but the pouring license part, not only is that not us, it sounds like it's state law and it may even trump us. So I, I don't know about that, we need to investigate that.
So that, that's where I'd like to follow up. We all understood what was going on here.
Am I right?
Based on this information, somebody trumped over yours. Is there something that you'll be able to do to say, hey, this was not done informing everybody, it was not done?
That's why I'm saying, I think we might need time to look into this, because it depends. I mean, if it's a state law, it's possible that we have no power, right?
So no matter what it said on here.
So this means nothing.
I don't know, that's what we're saying. I don't, I, this is the first I've heard about the pouring license.
But if you're gonna approve a.
We're not an enforcement board. I mean, we put, there's other people that can be in force.
But to have these stipulations, not knowing the laws, the state laws, the federal laws for alcohol, you would think you'd.
Wouldn't they talk to you or you talk to them somehow?
Basically.
The licensing. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Can I address this as the one who deals with the paperwork here in the city? So when there are decisions that are filed, they are given to all of the boards and committees that have, um, let me take a step back. Anytime we get an application, it goes out to, um, various boards and committees for comment. Board of Health, Fire Department, DPW, um, missing people, Conservation Commission, DEA. So they all have an opportunity to comment and provide feedback to the board as they're rendering decision. At the end of the process, they all get copies of the decision as well. I can only go so far into making them look at the paperwork that I'm giving them.
So the licensing board.
So the licensing board is the one who oversees the, the, the entertainment license and, and the pouring license. So what I'll need to do on behalf of the board is do some investigative work to see where those permits are standing and how, how they reflect with this.
Yeah, they don't match up.
Well, and so there's no contact between the licensing board and the planning board?
She said there is.
There is, but so.
They received the paperwork, but.
Okay, but also as a question of, I'm out seeing it.
Well, no, but so the other thing is, what the applicant has explained is that he thinks the state law has changed. And that if it's authorized, I mean, the state legislature doesn't run that stuff by us, right? So I mean, if they change the law after we make the special permit, they very well can trump us and we could be out of it.
But I'm just saying.
We don't know, that's why I'm saying.
It went to the licensing board to be approved.
We don't know that.
I don't know that.
We don't know any of them.
It does, it's on the paperwork.
I have to.
It's on the paperwork.
Yeah, we've got information that says it went to the licensing board. You can look on the state site and it went there and it.
And it's a farmer brewery.
Locally approved, and then it goes to the state for approval. My only question is, the local approval's coming, so you know it, it trumps over what was agreed here.
Right, okay.
My name is Kathy Trueheart, and it says right here, the public hearing on the, sorry if I say the name on Burnsy, Burnsy Application, was continued until October twenty-seventh, when a decision likely will be made. Any decision by the local board needs approval by the Massachusetts Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. So it has to go through you guys first, and then it goes to them.
Well, licensing.
Not them. Well, it goes to the, the board.
It goes to the licensing board. I don't see the licensing board decisions. I don't get a copy of them.
And they make decisions.
So I think we all need to understand with regard to this one particular topic that I'm reasonably certain, please listen.
Hold on, hold on.
I'm reasonably certain that it's our intention to meet again, to postpone this, so that we can go out and come back with that information. We respect what you're telling us and you're, and you're tipping us off, but we can't accept any of what you're saying or he's saying right now as, as law until we, I wouldn't even call it law. We, we really have to have Jessica do that investigation for us. So I wouldn't bother, I mean, you've given us what we need to know in that regard on that one piece.
Okay, what about the entertainment license he got? That's a certain other separate one.
Still goes to the licensing board.
So there's two of them, there's an entertainment and a pouring. But also, we don't want this patio. We, none of us want this patio.
Beyond that, yeah. So entertainment license, would that, anything change? Why did that occur and get approved?
Again, let, let, let's, let's.
I guess what I'm saying is, there was a change made to the pouring, the brewing license. Did that affect entertainment?
They make their two separate permits, but again, let me do some, let me do some investigation.
I'm just saying, both of them need to be investigated.
But the difference too, also, ju, just for, for clarification, you know, it, our special permit originally says will not include a pub or retail component. It doesn't specifically say no entertainment here, so it's a little bit different than, it, it's not contradicted by what we said in our special permit, even though it wasn't explicitly allowed, so it's a little different than the way the pouring license changed.
So a ban would be okay?
Well, it depends on what the situation is, we don't know. That's the whole point, we don't have the information.
And can I just ask, Eric, Eric, what, what changed? Which license, the farmer brewers or the pouring?
No, it's still a farmer, it's a farmer's brewing.
Right.
But the pouring license is a subset of the.
That is now available or whatever.
Well, right, you have the pour.
And that law changed in between the pouring, um, between the, uh, special permit and, I think it was like.
What changed, what changed? The pouring license?
In Massachusetts state law.
That they added a pouring license?
Yes.
But you, that's a whole, that's still completely separate, you had to apply for it.
No, it's part of the farmer brewers license.
But you have to apply for it and get approved?
Yeah, no, 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 it's still separate. Yeah, you have farmer brewers because of your situation, growing hops and making beer.
Yeah, but this is not, I mean, I, I am not allowed to serve wine, I'm not allowed to serve other people's beer. I can only serve my beer, so it isn't.
But it's still separate from the farmer brewers license.
And it's like a bar.
It's a pouring license, it's a pouring.
Well, you know what?
It's part of the farmer brewers license.
We can, we can find this out.
Yeah, we'll have to.
Yes, sir.
Robert, which is covered.
Robert?
Why is he operating under two names? Seventy, uh, seventeen seventy-six and Fort Hill Brewery? Is it, so he can get different permits without us knowing about it?
Let's see if he can answer.
No, the, the LLC, its name is Seventeen Seventy-Six Brewing Company. But we're, the brewery's name, much like Sam Adams, is called Boston Beer Company, okay? But they operate under Samuel Adams, it is the same, same practice.
But everything you put into the paper is under seventeen seventy-six, which we did not know about.
I filed the legal notice. Don't blame him, please.
Now you know how to do it for the future.
Okay.
Well, there's no blame, it's, we don't understand, we didn't know anything until this occurred.
I mean, my presumption that Seventeen Seventy-Six Brewing Company was fairly evident that it was a brewing company, there's only one in the neighborhood.
There's five of five in town. And when it's publicized in the papers, that's it.
Okay, all right.
Noted.
Yeah.
I, these are requests, not based on any of these last discussions.
Your name again, I'm sorry.
Jane Thirberg, eleven Fort Hill. Would you please find out from the school what their, what their feelings are? And secondly, would you find out from the police, fire department, whoever else is relevant to signage, new signage on the street? Because my, though our house is not as close as some of these others to the brewery, we're very aware of the, the speed of the traffic. Some of it may be the Rod and Gun Club, but I think a lot of it is, is to the brewery. So things like litter signage, speed limit signage, something on the bike trail to indicate, you know, be cautious. Those kinds of things, those are concerns, those are risks that need to be addressed before anything happens.
And our focus narrow.
Yeah.
I wanna come back to this issue of.
Hold on.
That, that, the sense that we've been taken a bit, whether it was deliberate or whether it just things evolve as way. My, my own impression is that Eric is very entrepreneurial. That is, he doesn't know at the beginning where he's going to be a year or two down the road, but when he sees opportunities, he takes them. Uh, my sense of it is that some, he or somebody, one of his associates is pretty good at PR. That is, they know where, where to put what to promote what they wanna do. Eric, it's on the, it's on your website. The property wants a hayfield, has a fantastic view of the mountain range. The space has enough room for the barn-like building, silos, two rows of hops, and a BMX track, parentheses, still in the works, in parentheses. It's what's still in the works that really worries us. Because what started out as was going to be a limited operation, every time we open our eyes a little wider, we discover that it has already become something more. And if we read carefully in his own website, we discover that there are even more plans. And those plans move in the direction, not a brewing more, brewing more beer, not growing more hops, but providing more entertainment.
It's revenue per hand.
It becomes an entertainment destination, and I don't think that's what we'd want in that corner of East Hampton.
Very well said.
Yes, sir.
One more, I think it's one more. Um, parking, so you agree to a twenty vehicle parking. The drawing itself that's with this proposal shows thirty-two plus a bus. I guess again, the question is, how did it change or has it changed or is it getting approved for more? But parking has been beyond the twenty, and it's being shown on the drawing as beyond twenty. So again, a question on that.
I may interject, we actually just, I think this is actually from the original planning board diagram, but, all right, it seems like you guys really don't want this beer garden. So I'll do you a favor, and you know what, we just won't do the beer garden.
But that's, that's not a total answer for us.
Well, I mean, it's just, I mean, honestly.
I appreciate that.
If you guys, if you guys really don't want it, you won't.
I appreciate that.
All right.
It's not about winning, though, it's just about what.
All right, well, it's fine, it's just clear that there is not community support for this. So you know what, I won't, I won't try anymore, and you know what? There you go.
I hope you understand our concerns.
I do understand the concerns, but at the same time, they are a little bit, you know, skewed. I mean, I do respect it, I.
It's just because it is a borderline residential.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak at this point, please hold. I ask that you hear me out fully, uh, because it probably won't start out well. I have a different perspective, but my job is to represent you and the city. We're here to put up natural stops to make sure that those two forces are well represented. You've brought forth some serious, the parking, the licensing issues, but we need to investigate that and go down those paths before we can. And, and you're gonna have to help in that. And you are definitely getting slammed right now. I see that. That's, we see that all the time here. That's part and parcel of what we do. My recommendation to you, and I, I know you're, you're working out with these citizens, and I think that's a great idea, communicating with them and just saying no. But I, I think that before you, and you make what decisions you want, but I think that you should try and have a dialogue, maybe invite them to your place, and maybe try and work things out before just abandoning it. My different perspective is this, I've only met people, and lots of them, that love Fort Hill Brewery.
I love their beer.
I've only met people like my wife that love standing outside and looking up at the mountains. That think that area, oh, my God, when you go there, you fall in love with East Hampton, and I want people to fall in love with East Hampton. That is a different kind of place, that you see that sort of thing. And it's that location, in part your location, that makes it magical.
That's what we love.
My hope at the end of this road, and this is just me speaking, is that new plantings could go up, that additional soundproofing inside could go up. There are actual physical things that can happen, scoff all you want, but you can take steps.
You don't live there, move, move to your house right there and put your kids out in the road.
Yeah, I ask that you last, let me finish.
Well, you were saying I'm scoffing, I'll, I'll state my story when you're done.
So I, I think there may be steps that you could take that could appease some, if not all, of the, of the issues people are having. Maybe not, I mean, it seems that if they're not willing to work a solution, they're not. But that's, it's not all about them, it's about the community at large. And there's definitely a component to the fact that Fort Hill Brewery is helping this community, is bringing goodwill and a good name to this community. Not that we didn't have it already, but it certainly brings it, that's my feeling about it.
So the people here, a good portion of them approved the brewery, correct?
Yes, as a farm.
As what the brewery was approved for. How many of us approved having bans?
Yeah.
Having beer served, having beer sold.
I don't disagree with you.
So your wife can still go and have a tasting.
Just a second, it's my turn.
One at a time.
So what you're saying is, it's a great business, it's great to have, we all agree. The issue is what it became. If you wanna have a bar next to your house, great, none of us want that. None of us lived there because of it, I didn't move there because of that. I knew the brewery was going in, but I knew the brewery had certain guidelines. If you stuck to the guidelines, great. Now how are we gonna trust someone? And as Bert elegantly stated, who knows where it's gonna stop? You wanna put flowers around it and you want a thousand people to go there? There's no control, you don't control the hours, you don't control if there's a hundred cars going down there. How many people wanna go down there and get free beer? Arcadia, kids go down there every weekend to go and go through Arcadia. The same ones that are driving right next to these cars, they're coming out of the brewery.
We do go to Arcadia, and there are controls that we put, and we have a, a criteria.
I don't believe they're gonna match.
We have a criteria on a special permit that we go through. Parking is one. Uh, I mean, there's a list here in our document.
I can't trust you.
King, do you wanna show some of the things that are in there that we go through?
No, we're asking you.
Listen for a moment.
Okay, so there's A through L, I don't know how many that is. So we have conformance with the provisions of the ordinance of the cities of East Hampton, the general laws of Massachusetts, and all applicable rules and regulations of state and federal agencies. Protection of city amenities and abutting properties through the minimizing of any detrimental or offensive uses. So the minimizing of is what it says. Um, or destruction of unique or important natural scenic or historic features on the site. Minimization of traffic, traffic and safety impacts of the proposed development on adjacent highways or roads. Adequacy of the methods of disposal of sewage and refuse and drainage of surface and subsurface water. You know, okay, so it goes, do you want, I don't know.
No, that's, you know.
So you got the idea.
It's on the website too, you can find, you can find the ordinance there.
It's section twelve point seven.
These are the things that we have to make sure are monitored, and some of the traffic, some of those things are on the list. So it is our duty, and we will look at them.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and as I think you're now aware, things have changed. If it was just the tasting and people going down to it, but now it's music, now it's entertainment.
That's.
I know there's snacks, I assume if you're pouring, you gotta have food.
Yeah.
Isn't that required? And so.
Yeah, it is.
We're just concerned about the growth. And, and I think you put specifications in place, I'm great with that. We had some, yeah, if we had some guarantee that those specifications would be followed. That's all I'm saying.
Sir.
Robert, which is covered. Uh, you talked about soundproofing and everything. He's got a generator right outside his building that is making noises where people can't even sleep at night. That he was supposed to keep here over a year ago, and he put two by fours around the thing.
It's still a problem?
It's still a problem, absolutely. So making soundproof inside the building is not gonna do anything for the outside of the building.
Well, that's not necessarily, I just wanna comment on this, we just had an applicant come before us, excuse me, over on O'Neill Street, uh, with a big factory that had a big fan that was blowing out fumes and smells and making a tremendous noise. And plantings at the end were an agreeable solution for everyone. Why? Because, you know, big ones or more enclosures, these kinds of things can help. Don't just shoot those things out, because built well, there can be improvements made, stipulations that we make. I mean, give them a chance.
But he's had a year to fix that, and he hasn't.
Seems like you haven't communicated all these things to him, have you?
It's been.
I understand there's been a lack of communication.
Also, I remember when he came in, he had this drawing of what the brewery was going to look like. And the parking was supposed to be looking towards the field. And we all said, well, we don't want to see the cars. So he goes, well, I'll reverse it. And now they're right there on the side, and we're still seeing the cars. It's not in the back of the building.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to repeat again about them outside drinking already and loud. I mean, I don't mind them having the brewery tasting that, but can they lower the volume down? You know, something. I mean, it's just, I should be able to hear it from my house, and I'm way far other way. I heard "Woo-hoo!", and I heard the lady singing from my house. I'm almost to the mic half.
Just one, John Knievel, just one final thing. And I'm asking the board to just put yourselves in our shoes. Would you want a brewery such as his to come in and lower your value of your house? No, of course not. You wouldn't want that. But if I tried to sell my house, and they came to look at it, and the bands were playing, and all the people were standing out there drinking beers, I'm going to lose my shirt if I ever try to sell my house. And I just want you to put yourself in that position that, you know.
You all agreed to a brewery, not a.
Yeah, and I don't think a brewery would, the way it was proposed, hurt my property values.
And in fact, the way it looks without people coming in and out is a handsome structure.
Yeah, beautiful.
It really is. It's beautiful. They've done a fabulous job of that. But that's not what it is. It's probably more than that right now.
Well, the good news is, a plastic manufacturer has looked into our property, and they sort of aren't buying. So unfortunately, I mean, it's great that, I mean, I'm really pleased that you guys like the, you know, the building. But, you know, in the grand scheme of things, if you looked at the tilt, I mean, there aren't that many people visiting us over the course of our limited hours. Okay? And you know what? That's fair. I've heard that you guys don't want to have a beer garden, and I respect that. And we will not push forward with that. But, you know, as a whole, I mean, I'd like to say that I've been trying really hard to be conscientious of our foothold here. And you know what? Fair enough.
And that's okay, but can I?
You don't want angry neighbors, I'm sure.
But you know, you having a bar isn't going to now support your, you know, expensive brewery. You know, you're in business to brew beer, not to have people come and drink and cause, you know, a havoc for the neighborhood.
Fair enough, and that's why I just agreed to get rid of the beer garden. I mean, it's kind of a moot point. I mean, from now on, we're sort of just, I told you, I won't do it. Alright?
So there needs to be, if this is truly the case, then there needs to be a formal withdrawal of the application.
Alright. You formally withdraw. I formally withdraw.
Okay. I guess that's that, then.
What happens with the other concerns?
Well, I mean.
I will bring it to the attention of the mayor. I'll bring it to the attention of the crews and fire chiefs.
Is there something else we can attend? Is it licensing board or whatever?
I'll bring it to the attention of the mayor.
No, is there something we can attend?
I don't know. I don't know the licensing board schedule. All the meetings are on the city's website. You can go, you can look and see.
I know they're posted, and I know they had a meeting yesterday at 3:00. What I don't know is, can I approach them and bring?
Yes, you can. It's a public meeting, just like any of the other boards. People can go to those meetings, absolutely. You can go, and you can voice pro or against what other applications.
Thank you very much.
So the mayor, it's run through the mayor's office. So if you want to know more information about the licensing board and their decisions, then contact the mayor's office directly. Okay?
Alright, thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Well, we're done now.
I don't know, it gets dropped and nothing else happens? Is that what we're hearing? Separately, we need to, nothing else is going to happen. We just don't know how.
I'm parked in front, so I couldn't talk upstairs. I couldn't upstairs.
Yeah, not used to this kind of war.
I think you got upset to them.
If they're allowed to drink outside, and they're.
I'll look into it. I'll look into it.
Because I've got a picture of 50 people standing out in front of the brewery.
I suggest that you directly contact the department. I mean, these are public.
We just wonder, if he has his portability, if he's quiet, has an inside ability.
I can't do nothing, I can do directly. You need to contact the department directly and talk to them. I mean, all I can do is I can reach out to the chief and send this to a public hearing for the planning board and look into it. If you have information that you want to share with the public.
It makes no sense. He doesn't have a right or a right to do it.
You need to contact the.
I know.
No, because he's a farm.
I feel betrayed that you want to let him in.
It's like a winery.
That licensing board should be hung by a yes.
Contact the department and tell them. And then if they don't know, they may send you to the licensing board. Okay?
Alright. Alright, guys, let's try to move on. Okay. Should we get to something more exciting? The update of the official zoning map.
Okay, so.
That's more exciting.
So, we've been working, the planning department, just some background. I mean, I gave you some information, but the last time that the zoning map was updated was 1995. Since then, there's been several amendments that have gone through city council that have never been added to the map. The zoning map is the official zoning for the city. So it's really important that this map get up to date. The 1995 map was hand-drawn by the city engineer, does not have parcel data. We now, since then, have, we work with CAI Technologies, who does the oversight for our online property assessment, which is the GIS base. And so we're working to make sure that the zoning map has parcel data and those are overlined correctly. So, so the, thank you, Libby. So, the process that we're doing right now is we've, Jamie spent a considerable amount of time basically going back and looking at all the city clerks' zoning amendment changes that have gone through, and trying to address inconsistencies between the 1995 map, the city clerk's files, and the online system is now. It's become way more complex than I ever thought this would be. So, we've got a bunch of, you know, a bunch of zoning changes that are easy for us to interpret and understand. There are some that, and this is why I'm putting this forth through a public process, there are some that the planning board and the ordinance subcommittee are going to need to discuss and make some decisions and go to the city council level. So what we're doing is putting a packet together now. I was hoping it'd be ready for you today. But I'm hoping to have it ready by the next meeting. Or a packet which very specifically sort of delineates out which ones are okay, which ones are inconsistencies between the city clerk's files and the 95 map, and the digital, and ones that are just a conflict between the 95 map and the digital. So there's kind of like two layers of issues going on here. So, I'm going to put a, we're working on putting a packet that's simple and easy to understand, which that's taking us a lot of time because it's pretty in the weeds and looking at, you know, lines essentially. So I'd like to sort of hold off on any discussion from the planning board until the next meeting, when I have a packet of information hopefully together by then. The process is what it's going to be is that, and I talked to the city clerk about how we want to handle this, is that I'm giving it to you for the board, for your initial review. Once you're okay with the package, then we'll send it to city council, and they'll start the city council process. So then it will go to the full council. They'll probably kick it to the property subcommittee, and then we'll schedule a joint public hearing to, like we do with all of our zoning amendments. And then we'll go to a full council for a vote. So this is going to take some time. So hopefully, and then by the next meeting, I hope to have a packet together. But it's going to take some good eyes and some good delineations here.
Keep it good and work.
Okay.
Alright. Planning board representative for ad hoc committee for stormwater ordinance review.
Okay, not yet. So the stormwater permit, as you know, is a general ordinance. It's not a zoning ordinance. And it's a permit that's administered by three different entities. If somebody has a special permit that requires stormwater permit, it's under the planning board. If they just need to go to conservation commission to get a notice of intent, then the conservation commission does the stormwater permit. In all other situations, it's just the city engineer. And so what we've been finding, and this is a fairly new ordinance. It's only been on the books for a couple of years, and we haven't, we haven't had a ton of situations that we've had to use it. But in the few situations that we have had it, we've been finding that in terms of the closeout process and the administration of it, there's inconsistencies between the board, between the boards. So we'd like to just sort of get together for at least once or twice to sort of hash out and make a consistent process that the conservation commission and the planning board, we all follow the same permitting process. So there's not this sort of difference in terms of how the permits are drafted, and what they're talking about, and what the conditions are looking at, and how the closeout happens. So.
Okay.
Alright.
So.
I was going to volunteer for that if you want.
Yes.
That's the best news I've heard all day.
It's the driest stuff, you know?
You're the perfect man for the job.
I'll give you an update as we go along.
That's good. Alright. Master Plan Implementation Committee update.
Yeah, that hasn't happened yet. I have to apologize. I have not had a good winter. I've had numerous spouts of pneumonia and half-dead breathing and all that kind of crap. Finally, my medications have straightened out, and I actually am breathing normally. And so I hopefully will be able to start trying to contact some people. Wendy, so far, is the only person that has expressed any continued interest in doing anything. But as I said, I've not, I've been so screwed up myself that I have not been able to actually make a date to meet her and stick with the plan. I've, you know, I've had to cancel a couple of times meetings and try and chase her up. I'll get her again, so.
I might consider doing, or asking Jessica and maybe Barbara to do another advertisement.
That's definitely things I'm thinking about.
Well, I guess, I think it's important that maybe we have a conversation about what the mission of the Master Plan Committee is. Because given the fact that there is a housing committee, an energy committee, an economic development committee, there was an open space committee for a short period of time while we were working on the open space plan. What is the role and the function of the Master Plan Committee? And what does the planning board want to see the Master Plan Committee do? I think that's really a question.
I think going forward, we should do, before you go out and get a million people and go in a million different directions, I think we should sit down, put on paper some kind of a guideline as to where you should go and what you should do. That way, you can pick up the paper, you can say, okay, I got to go here, there, there, whatever you got to do. So you just won't go out there and get a bunch of people running all over the place.
Well, part of my thought process, too, was that, since the master plan has come about, there are a number of years have transpired. It might be a good place to start with the various departments and see what they have accomplished on their agendas.
Yeah, exactly.
As far as the master plan goes, you know, what have they already done? Without having to have an entire committee sit around and talk about it for one or two hours and not really find out much of anything, I think we really need to go to the departments, the department heads, and see what they've already managed to do.
My suggestion was, in the beginning, was to take the old master plan that was done 12, 13, 14 years ago, and take a look at it. Take a look at what each, because in the book, it'll list all the departments. And it'll list what they plan to have and what to go forward with East Hampton. You can take a look at that. Go to these departments and see just what has been completed and what still has to go forward. It's going to take a little time, but.
We spent two years doing exactly that. We went through everyone, we invited members of the departments, we sent our.
Not through talking.
Well, just.
I'm still waiting for your minutes. But anyways, that's what I feel, that's what I would have done, is gone through each one of them and say, where have you gone? Where do you want to go from there? And the committee then will say, this is what was completed, but we still have to go this much further. And then just go from there and make your list and all that. And it's going to take a little time. It's not, you know, you even said it yourself, it's just getting a committee. Do you want to have 20 people running health or scout there?
I don't.
You can have a few people going, and then going to these different departments, and then going back to you saying, this is what I found out, rather than having, I'm going to say, 20 different people. But what happened was, we, the committee that was formed, it slowly got demoralized. I mean, it just kept people dropping off, you know, interest this time and not this time.
And I think one of the other things that we can use with the various committees, like the housing partnership, et cetera, et cetera. We can go to each one of those and see, you know, see what progress they have seen in their particular committee, what kind of movement they've had.
I don't think this is the right direction of going at all. Because I went that direction, and it's been work.
Okay.
That's the end. I want to mention, too, all the minutes that we had were posted to Barbara.
Yeah, I have them. I don't have them with me tonight, but I do have them.
Listen, I don't want to, I'm not trying to be the squeaky wheel or up a pain in the ass here. I want you to succeed. Do what you're going to do. I merely state this because the thing that caused our committee, and you're right, there was demoralization. It's because after getting all that information and poring through it all, and having the pieces and trying to get someone to take minutes and keep it all and collate it, people lost morale because they didn't know why they were doing it. And it's a big project, going through all those and putting those pieces together. They lost a will, and they, the thing they asked me again and again and again is, so we're putting together this information, and then what? And I lost people because the committee didn't do what Jessica just said we should set up a mission to do. They need to have more than just find out where the master plan is. It needs to actually have something that they can push towards.
I mean, that's the question. It's sort of, it's more existential as far as like what the goal is. If the idea is to have a committee that's going to constantly approach every board and department in the city and say, this is what you said nine months ago. What have you done since then? I mean, I think that's going to be a huge task to do citywide, but I don't know. I mean, there's obviously an interest from the public at large in keeping sort of the nose to the grindstone on this master plan and not like casting it aside. So I think we need to try to think of how best to do that. And I don't really have an answer right now, but.
May I make a suggestion? In the town of Hadley, they have a master plan, and they have a master plan implementation committee. The planning board tells the master plan implementation committee, we want you to work on this task. Or alternatively, the master plan implementation committee says, we think this zoning is, was the number one thing that people wanted out of this plan. We're going to draft it for you. And then they'll work with the planning board to refine it before it goes to a town meeting. I think you could make the master plan committee do your marching orders if there's certain, you are the, I mean, I'm the city planner, but you are the planners in this community. You have a very large responsibility. So you can, the master plan is your document, technically, by state law. It's the document of the planning board. So you can decide out of that master plan what you want the master plan implementation committee to be working on, and then move forward on that. And there's things that have changed in economics since that plan was done. The energy committee is out of, I mean, the energy chapter is out of date. That could be, updating just that chapter alone could take a committee a year, working with the energy committee itself. If there's specific zoning that we've talked about in this room, you could have the master planning implementation committee start to draft zoning. I mean, there's a lot, I think what you need to do is come up, the planning board needs to come up with a list of what you want to get done out of that plan.
I agree.
And then tell the master plan implementation committee, this is what you're working on. Go work on it. Go figure this out for us. We don't have time to do it because we're reviewing things, and we've got other things going on. We have zoning maps, we've got a whole host of other things going on. a whole host of other things going on. We think this piece is really important. Go figure out how we can go do this. And then come back to us and report on the best way to do it. You know, you got to report of highway business that we haven't been dealing with, that we've got a lot of critique on because we haven't done anything with it. Have the master plan implementation committee put together a zoning package that incorporates some of those highway business recommendations. I mean, there's lots for them to do if you give them direction. That's my...
Sounds like a good idea.
It's great. It's too bad you didn't get to write it down.
That's okay. It's in her head.
J A Lecter's board. Sorry, I'm like the new person. I'm still trying to get like the context and everything. So, well, but, so you're on the master plan implementation committee.
Apparently.
You're at the chair, okay.
It's default position.
Sorry. I'm sorry. Apologies for being ignorant.
No, no, not at all.
And it's you, and there's, it sounded like you, so there's one other person who's interested.
One other person so far.
And then you have a bunch of people who are dropping out.
I haven't heard from them. They have not responded to emails, so...
So we have both the like, the recommendation of what we should do, which sounds great, but then also the problem of needing to recruit some...
We managed to repopulate our board.
I think that with a mission focus that's very specific, that'll be a lot easier.
Yeah.
And I think the problem with recruiting for it now is that they're afraid, and those that are already have been in, and they don't know that they'll get lost in the weeds again, spending two years inviting every committee, meeting with every committee, and trying to do the whole thing. You just can't do the whole thing.
Two of the guys that are on that is the chairperson of the historic commission, and John Bruner, who's also a member of the historic line with myself.
Great guy.
And those two guys, they haven't heard anything. I asked them the other day about that. The last time we had a meeting, I said, did you hear anything about the master plan? No, we haven't heard anything. So apparently, there's some kind of a roadblock between you and them.
Okay, well, I'll have to try and figure out where that communication broke down, but they did get emails the end of the year and the beginning of the year, and nobody responded to them.
But if you want to talk to them, next historical commission meeting, they're going to be there. Just on a Wednesday night. Usually it'll last Wednesday every month.
But I concur that we should put together the, as you say, marching orders before you make a little...
A wish list at least of what we'd like to accomplish.
Is that something we can put on the agenda for the next meetings, that we can have some time to think about it individually?
You guys will get to decide about it, because I won't be here for the next meeting.
I thought you were feeling better.
I am. I'm going on vacation.
Okay. Yeah, I think we should put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Do we need to do anything with the ZBA application, Jess, or is this just because it's going to come to us?
No, but I am going, I just want to, yeah, give you a quick briefing. So, we have, as you all know and well, we have a wireless communication overlay district, beating these issues. So, the way that the zoning is currently drafted is that telecommunications towers can only be placed in the wireless district. However, there's the Federal Communications Act that basically says that if a provider can prove that there's a gap in service, they can locate pretty much anywhere. So, this application is from Verizon, and they're asking for a variance through the ZBA to place a tower outside of the zoning, the wireless zoning district. If the variance is granted by the ZBA, then Verizon will be bringing an application to the planning board for review for all of the, for the site plan and the conditions and all of that stuff. So the only thing they're asking for from the ZBA is permission to go outside the wireless zone.
And then that's beyond our scope of the second stage?
And then that's outside your scope of the second stage.
We're literally just doing a set plan approval.
Basically, yes. So if it's granted, then the decision will say that they've been granted this because of the Federal Communications Act and, you know, city attorney records that, because it's asking for a use variance, which our zoning specifically does not allow.
Right.
So it's sort of even breaking our own zoning. So it's a little bit funky. But it's, you know, just a heads up that if this is granted, this will be coming our way. So you can do with what you want with that application in terms of the ZBA right now. But it is outside what our zoning permits, so...
Gotcha. But this is seeking comment from us?
That's the comment.
That's just the regular comment.
Yeah, that's just, that's the package of, so that shows their gap coverage maps, basically, and a quick location for where they plan to place it.
Does anybody wish to make a comment on this, or should we stick with our general practice?
General practice.
Good.
Totally agree.
Anything else? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
You go. Go for it.
I want you to make that motion.
I moved to adjourn this meeting.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stay in.
Thank you, Jess.